It's regular meeting of Navasota City Council's called to order on this Monday, the 28th day of July in council chambers. Let the record show, all council members are present. Welcome and thank you for being here this evening. I ask that you put your cellphones into silent mode. And a reminder to visitors, if you would please sign in. And if you wish to speak under visitors' remarks, please fill out the form found in the foyer and state your name and address at the podium as we must document home meeting business and remarks limited to three minutes. Tonight's invocation will be led by Pastor Matt Cecil of First United Methodist Church, then followed by the pledges.
Ever-present God, we come before you tonight as your community, right here in Navasota. You have placed us so that we might work towards your work, that we might work towards the betterment and the fulfillment of this community that you have placed in our stewardship, in our care. Guide our work tonight, guide the conversations and the words that are shared, help us to celebrate honorees and recognize those who have achieved years of service, help us to recognize the good things that are happening here in this community, help us to look forward with hope for what you are doing through the comprehensive plan. Lord, you are working right here in Navasota. And we seek your presence, we seek your grace, and we seek your wisdom among our council and among our citizen race so that we can follow your will and your plan today and forevermore. We pray all these things in your holy and wonderful name, Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. Amen.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the United States, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honorable Texas, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Yes, sir.
Item four is staff report. I'm going to begin with a proclamation. I'm going to ask that anyone that is with Mr. Williams tonight for this presentation, if you'd like to come forward and join with him. You can just get right forward. Sir. You're good. Yeah, look. Welcome. It's a proclamation recognizing Reverend Hubert Daniel Williams, Sr., on his retirement at Pleasant Hill Baptist Church. Whereas Reverend Williams, Sr., was born November 3rd, 1934, the third child to Nathan and Roberta Williams, later met and married Ruth Reese, and to that union, eight children were born. Reverend Williams worked for Gulf State Utilities diligently for 33 years while working full-time with utilities company, continued to provide for his family and the community by operating auto mechanic shop in his home neighborhood, continued to provide quality service for anyone in need, even for those who did not have the funds to pay for services rendered. With his love for the community, expanded when he was called to minister the word of God in September, 1999. Soon after, acquired and pastored Pleasant Hill Baptist Church until his retirement in 2025. Reverend Williams ministered to those in nursing homes, jails, and homes of the sick and shut-in. He's a member of the Navasota Ministers Alliance and currently holds the title of the oldest member of the alliance. Whereas Reverend Williams has worn many hats and titles over the years, his highest honors include him being a true man of God and also a five-year cancer survivor. His wisdom and knowledge, in addition to his compassion for people, being a friend to the friendless, and his will to serve the Lord in his daily walk of life are his most notable attributes and makes him a viable link in the community. Now therefore be it proclaimed that I, Bert Miller, is mayor of the city of Navasota, do hereby proclaim to all the citizens of our city to honor Reverend Daniel Williams, Sr., for his service, continued dedication, and passion, not only for the members of the church, but also the members of the community.
If you want to make a question, there you go.
Make sure you can see her.
She's on the front, yeah.
(Laughter).
Is my good side coming?
They're all good.
Well done.
Hello, how are you, sir?
Good to see you. Yes, sir.
(Inaudible).
You're welcome, thank you.
(Inaudible).
Brendan Williams.
(Inaudible).
(Inaudible).
Congratulations, sir. Well done.
(Inaudible).
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 Hello, how are you, sir?
Good to see you.
Yes, sir.
(Inaudible).
You're welcome, thank you.
(Inaudible).
Brendan Williams.
(Inaudible).
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 Yes, sir.
Be right.
Hi, Mayor and Council. Next, we have a five-year service award for Eric Kovarubius.
From the city of Navasota, a certificate of achievement for Eric Kovarubius for five years of service to the city. Thank you, Eric.
And next will be a CIP update from our project manager, Matt Julian.
Good evening, City Council. Matthew Julian, project manager. Progress is being made in our department. Last week, the pump for well number eight was delivered. Our engineer that we hired to oversee this project did a field inspection. Everything looked good on it. Weisinger set the pump in the ground, and now we wait on the pump testing. Unfortunately, there's no electricity, so we're kind of waiting on that. They did give the option to bring temporary power to do the test and close out the project, but that would be an additional cost. Since there's, you know, there's not a rush right now, we're not going to look into that unless you'd like for us to. But everything is in progress. Last we need to do with that is the pump test and one last back tea test. And again, we're just waiting on electricity. Progress on the water tower is still going strong. Lot of welding, lot of grinding. They are about 30% complete with the construction of it. Nothing is hanging in the air yet, other than the columns, the support legs, but it's going. Street maintenance project is moving fast. They've already completed the cement stabilization of Tyler, Turner, Burton, and Wood Joe Jackson streets, and they've started on South Peoples and West Virginia today. They're moving right along. Rosiek Street pedestrian bridge, I know it's been an issue for a while. We have been meeting with textile. We met with the contractor and his engineer. We've spoken with the engineer that kind of looked at the original design, and we're still trying to find the best solution that maintains the integrity of the sidewalks and the ADA compliance. That's the biggest thing that we're focused on, is making sure that once that bridge is done, it's safe to be able to get onto it with the ramps and stuff. So we're still looking at those options. And the last thing I have, in the budget, we had money set aside to do some awnings for some of our lift station control panels. That's something that we needed to add. You know, in the past, we just had electrical parts in there. So now we've got some computer parts to work on our skater system, and we've noticed that the heat is causing some problems, so the awnings provide shade for that. So we completed the two awnings that we were going to do this year, and they look really good. That's all that I have. If any questions you have for me.
What's the status of the sidewalk that's in the creek? Is that still moving along?
Yes, the wall is almost done, and then they got to the sidewalk. There hasn't been any delay, other than the original design of the wall, but they're working on the wall and haven't had any problems with it.
For the people that live in that neighborhood, how long should they expect that all the construction wrap and all of that garbage, that looks like garbage, is going to be over there in the creek?
I do not have an answer, but I can find out, and it will be on the weekly update.
Okay. And I'm not asking for an exact date, but just, you know, is it going to be another month, or two months, or four months?
I'm going to guess five months or two, but I will confirm that for y'all. All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Any reports from council, all liaisons, and boards and commissions?
Mayor, I have a couple items for staff reports when you get to that, before we move on to the next.
Yeah, you can go ahead.
So I just wanted to, I've got three things just particularly of interest for staff reports, not only for you all, but for the audience that's here. There were some public comments last meeting about the utility billing, so I wanted to give an update from staff on the progress that is being made. We are using an outside consultant to do a detailed audit of our billing system, actually comparing the bills that are coming out to the rate order ordinance that we have to make sure that everything is programmed in the system. Simultaneously to that, we are also, we have the software vendor, Incode. You may recall that we were, about the time I came on, the city was transitioning from version nine to version 10 of our Incode software. And so we have Tyler Technologies as the software manufacturer. We have them reviewing, helping see if there's something that went on with regard to that transition of versions. And then, again, also parallel to both of those, where we also have the person that was the project manager that helped several years ago on the AMI water meters is going to come in and help us assess the actual hardware to make sure there's not something going on from the hardware standpoint. So we're trying to investigate all of the components of the comprehensive billing system to try to find the problems. I would encourage residents that see problems, continue to bring those to our attention, but I also wanted to just allay any fears that the city is not going to only issue credits. If we find an error in this audit that resulted in someone being overcharged, we will make those credits, whether or not they bring them to our attention. I just wanted to, that was one speculation that was brought up last time, so I just wanted to make sure that everyone knows, we are committed to making it right and to get those corrected and to give credits where credits are needed. In addition to that, there was a couple of you all brought to me a request to try to extend the season for our swimming pool, and I just wanted to give also an update and maybe even a shout-out for assistance. The lifeguards that we currently have are either college students or high school students, and when they return to college or return to school, they are either engaged in extracurricular activities that make them not available. And so while we would love to keep the pool open maybe weekends until Labor Day or maybe even a little beyond when it starts getting cool, unfortunately, the lifeguards that we currently have on staff are not available after this weekend, once they start going back to school and getting engaged in their extracurricular activities at school. So if you know anyone who would be willing to serve or wants to serve in that capacity, I would encourage them. It might be too late for this season, but for them to get engaged next year so that we might be able to, we've invested a lot into that pool, and we want to keep it open as long as we can. And so if you know anyone that'd be interested in being a lifeguard for the city, we'd be happy to have them and be happy to leave that open for the residents to enjoy a little longer. And then finally, we've talked a lot about quality of life and park improvements, and it has been suggested a couple times, or talked about a couple times, about Miller Park and the fact that that park has been there a while and doesn't really have much usefulness to the immediate vicinity residents. If you've been by there over the last few days, you'll see that our public works crews have started clearing an area. We're going to put a basketball court in there. It'll be very similar to what we have at Cleveland Park, but they're going to put in a basketball court there so that those residents in the immediate area will have an opportunity to make good use of that park and to enjoy themselves. There's picnic tables also, they can come out and have a picnic or whatever they'd like to do. So again, there might be bigger plans in the parks master plan that we're just kicking off, but this gives an immediate usefulness to that area, and I do want to particularly extend an appreciation to our public works staff who built this into their busy schedules and have made time to do this. So appreciate Jennifer and Jose and their team taking this under their wing and making it happen for us. And if all goes well and Mother Nature cooperates with weather, we might have, the concrete might actually all be poured by the end of next week. So that would be great to see in just a couple weeks, well, while basketball goes up and ready to see some basketballs going through nets over there. So that's it.
We've already seen a big jump over in the Cleveland Park area.
Yes, sir.
(Inaudible).
(Inaudible). Usually Cleveland Park, my wife and I were out walking the other day, other evening, and there was probably 15, 20 people out there playing basketball, different things.
I think we're getting some discovery.
It didn't come good use.
Yeah, discovery of our park system and the fact that all of it kind of connects to each other. James' videos have been kind of nice, too, if you've had an opportunity to see those. Good. Thank you, sir.
That's all, Mayor.
All right. Just a reminder, the applications for boards and commissions for appointments coming up in September, the deadline is the 31st of August, is that clear? And you can get those applications either by Michelle or Suzie at City Hall, or you can go online to navasotatx.gov, and it's on the homepage. You can click right on it and do it electronically. As mentioned about the pool, I believe the date right now, the last day that it'll be open is the 3rd of August, I believe. I'm curious.
Sounds right. This weekend. This weekend, yes.
And the 31st, which is Thursday, the Navasota Quants Club is sponsoring a cool-off that will make the pool free that day and also have some free shaved ice provided there. So that'll be kind of the last opportunity there. I'm not exactly sure of the first day of school. Does anybody know?
August the 11th, I looked at the calendar the other day.
So that'd be a good chance to cool off. Okay, thank you. Thank you, sir. All right, so that would, you know, give a last chance to, well, that'd be one more chance. The water day at the library is on the 4th, so we'll still have another day for the kids to come out and get wet and have some fun there. On the 2nd of August, the Grimes County Coalition, our youth approved, is having school supply, distribution, backpacks, hygiene kits, and that's on the August 2nd, and that's at the admin building parking lot, I believe. And the 4th of August is the community meeting, the town hall for the updating of our comprehensive plan, that is at Navasota Center from 6:00 to 8:00. If you're not able to come, there is a survey on the website that will address all of the different facets of the plan, and you can have your input that way if you're not able to make that meeting. On the 5th of August, Grimes County Back to School Health and Safety Day is at the Expo Center, that's from 10:00 to 1:00. And again, that's also, that's bringing in health-related resources as well as school supplies and things for the kiddo before they head back to school. 7th of August, sounds of Navasota, the Spicoli's Night. Why did I put the 7? I don't know. Anyway, thanks for coming. That's the same day as the farmer's market, right? Okay, at least I got that part right. And that's from 9:00 to 1:00, so you can do the farmer's market, and then that evening, come over to City Hall. And I've heard them, and in fact, I think they were in Brenham this past weekend, so they're all, I think in Hall 80's, kind of a real fun, and so be sure to come out for that. That's from 7:30 to 9:30 on the 9th, right here at City Hall. On the 9th of August, Men Making Moves Foundation, they're doing backpacks at the high school, and that starts at 10:00 a.m. Lots of opportunities for lots of our community organizations coming together to get our kids ready for school. On the 16th of August is the Grimes County True Blue Banquet being held at the Expo Center, and that organization does support the Navasota Police Department, so if you're able to come out for that, that'd be great as well. And then just down the road a bit, the 20th of August is the Blood Drive at First United Methodist Church, and I'm just kind of taking it upon myself to encourage folks to come out for the 20th Blood Drive and do it in honor of Mr. Hollis Hood, who we just lost very recently. And he was, he was the founder of the Blood Drive in Navasota, and if any of you remember how he would drive around town and have his speaker on the top of his car, "Give blood today." Kind of reminds me of the Blues Brothers when they were, had their little speaker on the beach there, but anyway. I digress. That's the 20th of August. And you can go to redcrossblood.org, and you can make your appointment, you can set the time that you come. But let's do it for Mr. Hood. And I believe he ended up, when he wasn't, at the time he wasn't able to give blood anymore, he had given 25 gallons. And if any of you know, that's a lot. So anyway, let's do it for Mr. Hood. Item number five, consideration possible action on amending the annual lawn care services for a public grounds agreement between the city of Navasota and J.C. Sandberg Construction Services to include the mowing of Miller Park.
Mayor and council, this was something that when we looked into doing some improvements there at Miller Park and got to look in, there was specific language in the ordinance, not sort of, the action that the council took awarding this contract that excluded Miller Park. But now that we're going to have a basketball court out there, we've got the picnic tables, felt like it'd be more appropriate to have it mowed rather than with a brush hog and looking like an open field, to actually mow it with a manicured, a zero-turn lawnmower and be manicured like the rest of our parks. And so we were just asking that the council make an amendment to their previous motion to include Miller Park for the duration of this year's contract, and then it will automatically be included in, as long as you all support that, it will be included in subsequent contracts. We did look at the budget, and because of rain throughout the year and mowings that didn't occur, it looks like we've got enough money to cover it, or with other funds that aren't going to spend all of their currently budgeted dollars, we will be able to make that, we'll true it up, but it's not going to, it's not going to cause us any issue to be able to include it for the rest of this mowing cycle.
To be correct on that, the lawn service comes to town 47 times a year. Is that correct? It's not every week that they do come, correct?
Even during the winter?
Well, that would be, the 47 would get you down, you know, you'd have, there's 52 weeks, so that's about five weeks where they skip, you know, in the wintertime or times when it's not necessary.
That's correct. So the contract that we have with them, they don't get paid unless they cut grass?
Unless they cut grass, yes. Unless they cut grass, they won't get paid, yeah.
Sure, there's some offset there. Right. Mr. Mayor, I move that we add the Miller Park to the grass service.
Second. Motion by Mr. Harris, second by Mr. Gessner, to amend the lawn care services to include Miller Park. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any non item carries? Item six, consideration possible action regarding a sales and service agreement between the city and Dayhill Office Technology Corporation for Xerox copiers and corresponding master lease agreement between the city and Xerox Financial Services, LLC.
Mr. Mayor and council, good evening. Luke Bediostato, Development Services Director. I'm just going to briefly summarize, our current Xerox lease agreement expires at the end of August, and so it is time to renew again. What you have before you tonight is what staff considers the best value out of all the proposals we received. We did go out and shop around, got three other pricing, and all the others are very close or very similar to our current pricing model, which is about $2,400-ish dollars a month. This new proposed agreement for 60 months with the same company is outlined in the proposal, a little over $1,700 a month. So that's a big cost reduction, and I did a good job shopping around, and we ended up in the same vendor, but they gave us a pretty good, pretty good deal, we feel like. I think we ultimately calculated it at a 37% decrease with all copiers being upgraded to color capabilities. And we did do some minor adjustments where, obviously, like the copier that Suzie and Michelle uses to put packets together, that needs to be high-speed so they're not in there, you know, in those 300-page packets, but the other copiers don't need to, you know, spit out 100 pages a minute, right? So there were some minor adjustments and tweaking, but ended up with overall a much better price and definitely more equipment and more bang for our buck on it. So legal counsel did review the proposed agreements, and everything was up to muster.
Whenever we can stay with the same company and get a 37%... Whenever we can stay with the same company and get a 37% decrease is for good.
Yes, sir.
Hurry up before they change their minds.
Yeah, and you don't have to go through the upheaval of moving machines out and new ones in.
Well, we still have to go through that, because they are giving us new models, the latest models.
Not all of them.
Yeah, they're all, they're all being replaced, yes, sir. Yeah, we told them to do it all at the same time, at the same day, just to make it smooth. We'll have, we'll have to phase it probably, because it'll be, especially upstairs with all the, all the use. So we'll have to plan it carefully, but, but yeah, it's a full replacement, so.
Just as a word of advice, and seeing this happen before, make sure it fits in the elevator, whatever size they are going to bring. We missed that step in my, my employment, so.
To get a helicopter, maybe.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the sales and service agreement between the city and Dayhill Office Technology.
Motion by Mr. Fulton, second by Mr. Harris to approve the sales and service agreement or renewal agreement with city and Dayhill Office Technology Corporation for Xerox copiers and corresponding master lease agreement from the city and Xerox Financial Services LLC.
Mayor Council, just to, just to clarify, there's also, there are two agreements that you're approving, one is the sales and service agreement, the other one is the master lease agreement. So do you mind including that in your?
I'll amend my motion.
Thank you, sir.
All right, motion as amended, including service agreement and master lease agreement. Second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, item carries. Good job.
Yep. My.
Your my, yeah.
Yeah, my knocked it out of the park.
Item seven, consideration of possible action to appoint Comprehensive Plan Advisory Committee, CPAC, for the ongoing comprehensive plan update.
Mayor Council has brought the last meeting with the ongoing comp plan update. A Comprehensive Plan Advisory Committee is recommended by our consultant, Public Management, and I know that you all received several suggestions, as well as the city manager that's listed in your staff report, and so hopefully you had an opportunity to review those candidates and maybe make a decision tonight on who and how many you'd like to appoint.
Well, I guess I'll start talking here first, on the community stakeholders. We have eight of them, and I would be happy if we could put all eight of them on the committee, along with the two council members and along with the three P and Z members.
I'm just, curiosity, the, the stakeholders, were all of them, are we aware that they were spoken with and agreed to? Because I don't know who suggested who here.
The three that I have agreed to.
Okay.
Yeah, I got no, I will just offer, Mayor, I got no indication from, from several sources that provided names to me as recommendations that they had talked to, but we did talk, Lupe and I talked earlier, and based on what Councilman Harris just mentioned, if you all wanted to, and you wanted to appoint, you know, it sounded like if I did the math quickly in my head, that would be 13 people total. The, the, the committee is completely open to however many you want to appoint on there. Obviously, there becomes a point where it's hard to get consensus if you get too many folks, but having a committee of that size might make it a little easier to schedule meetings where, you know, you don't necessarily have to have 100%, but if you can get enough of them there, they can keep the ball rolling forward and you don't stall if you end up with people with tough schedules. So if you all were interested, I think it would be appropriate to appoint all of them pending their acceptance of such an appointment, and myself and the city secretary can reach out to them and, and get confirmations for you.
Because I know, I see three of them here tonight, and so I'm assuming they're all agreeable. Mr. Bearden, Ms. Clemmons, and Ms. Richardson, they'll all be good. Let's see that. There's three of them, and I believe you talked to Philip.
Right, yep. And Connie and Tadia.
Oh, there she is, hiding back there, I couldn't see her. Yeah, I mean, I, I believe.
So I'm going to make sure, if we did this, yep, that Mr. Cox, I've contacted Connie, Deborah Richardson, Bert Bearden, and Dia Copeland, all been contacted.
And Tyler Perry, I contacted Tyler Perry.
Okay.
Brendan Williams.
Okay.
Deborah Richardson.
Okay.
So we would just need to get contact information off, you know, email and phone number, and, but yeah, first, make sure that they're, you know, willing to serve, and it's a sunset committee, so it's not something that I have to commit long-term to, so.
Mr. Mayor, I move to appoint the community stakeholders and council members and P and Z members that are listed.
To be their acceptance.
Yeah, I was just, just fixing to go there. For the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Committee.
Second. Motion by Mr. Fulton, second by Mr. Gessner to approve the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Committee, subject to their agreement to serve. Community stakeholders, Mr. Stabler, Mr. Cox, Ms. Clemmons, Ms. Perry, Ms. Richardson, Ms. Williams, Mr. Tucker, Mr. Bearden, Mayor Pro Tim Fultz, Councilmember Hope, P and Z members, Ms. Copeland, Ms. Hancock, and Mr. Dr. Walla. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, item carries. Item eight, consideration of possible action on memorandum of understanding between Navasota Independent School District and the city of Navasota regarding four school resource officers. Chief?
Mayor, City Council, Mike Myers, Chief of Police. In front of you is the, this year's contract between NISD and the city of Navasota for SROs at the schools in the city limits of Navasota. We started the contract about three years ago, having written contract with them, which we had two officers, and as the laws changed, we had to have an officer for each school. And so this one is basically, we do have the four schools in the city limits, so we, as of earlier this year, we assigned the fourth one. Basically, it just outlines, you know, they're, they cover payroll and such like that, we outfit them, we train them, they send them to training for any school-related functions and so forth.
Mike, can you kind of give us an overview of, we have four resource officers for the school district?
Correct.
And if we did not have those resource officers from the district, those four officers would not be on the staff, is that correct? Or is that not correct?
So, no, we pretty much hired them to do that, but we pay, like, during the summertime. So pretty much 70% of their, throughout the year, they're at the school, the other 30% they're on patrol functions. That would be on budget side of things, we hired them when we came into the contracts with the school in order to help with the payroll and so forth of having these extra officers.
Well, what I'm getting at, and I'm not against the RSO officers, I just want the public to know that, from what I'm reading here, the city is funding quite a bit of money to support the school district on security with the outfitting of the vehicles, vehicles and the man-hours.
So on the, when they're at the school, it's all NISD, the vehicles are paid for by NISD, and then we do a split on the outfitting of the vehicles.
All four vehicles is paid by?
Correct.
So it's a partnership, it's not?
It, it, it's, it's not, it's, yeah, so salary-wise, 30-70 roughly. The units, patrol units, NISD pays for those and gives us the title to them. We maintain them, oil changes and so forth. The outfitting is split between the city and the school, and we do outfit the officers and we train them for, when they're not in the school, they're on patrol shifts, as you saw the summertime, you saw any police officers for extra ones, because they have to go through a full FTO training, so we do train them. They do have all of our gear that's required to be a full-time officer, so we do provide that.
I had a question, and I don't know if really this is for you, and I assume that this hasn't changed, and I've just never seen it, but on page two, 2.3, the first sentence, can we, can we put ourselves in any bind for saying we're a confidential source of counseling? I mean, I don't even know what that means, I, I kind of assume I know what it means, but.
They see the officers there every day, and if they feel like they want to talk to them, maybe not school-related stuff, maybe at home and things like that, so they can come to them, same as their counselors and so forth, so they're just an extra person. As they get older, you know, they're, we do have a couple SROs that are really good, and they feel more confident to talk to that officer about other things that may be, depends if it's outside of school or in school, and then they, they can speak with them. They do, and that's part of their, so, and NISD part of their contract too, they send them to the school safety conferences and trainings, which do help them out a lot for that extra.
Mayor Pro Tim, there are two provisions in the agreement that would allow, there's a, there's an issue of student safety or somebody else's safety, or there's a determined need to break that confidentiality, that the officer has that discretion to deal with situations that need to be addressed, so it would not put the city in a bind in that respect, and I would, I would see this as, you know, counseling is just any other, people do like to confide with police officers and that sort of thing, so I really don't think that it would extend any liability to the city or the officer, and we do have the, the officer does have the discretion to discuss things with those that need to know if there's a safety issue or something that comes up.
So like an example, if they saw a weapon on somebody, they want to go to the officer and tell them to remain, like, not be called out and name-dropped and all that, so they're gonna, then they can go deal with that. We've had that several times.
I, I think just the semantics of will versus may, I don't know that it matters. Either way, just in my mind, I was thinking, they will serve or they may? So, anyway, that's all I was asking.
I think, I think there's a provision in, in there that, that they're not to substitute for the?
There is, yeah.
For the counselors.
Correct, yes. We're no new school policy and all that, that's outlined in there. We're pretty much.
I'll question it again, because there is going to be a counselor, a regular.
And there, that's the thing, when they start getting into something else, they have to contact the school official to jump in or that, that just determines on which way they go, but if they feel comfortable needing to be the outcry person and then push them to that side.
Yeah, it's, it's cool. Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the MOU between NISD and the city of Navasota regarding four school resource officers.
Motion in second. Motion by Mr. Fulton, second by Mr. Harris to approve the MOU with Navasota Independent School District and the city of Navasota regarding four school resource officers. I was just gonna ask something real quick, too. Don't they also have the, aren't the SROs somewhat involved with campus crime stoppers? Or like where they can report?
Crime stoppers, and we have the P3 tips, yes.
Those P3 tips, so there is an opportunity there for, you know, kids who are maybe not comfortable, speaking with a, with an officer, that they do have that option.
And all the SROs are on that program, so they immediately get that and they work with the on-campus.
It's just an added level.
Correct.
Mayor, one other item, just, the superintendent did mention the other night, when they approved it, it's not something for consideration tonight, because they've already approved it in this format, but he did offer that if you all were interested in including an evergreen clause or some multi-year format in future years, so that it doesn't have to come every single year, they would be open to that as well. So just throwing that out there for you all to consider.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, item carries. Item nine, consideration of possible action on improving ordinance 1073-25, amending chapter six, health and sanitation, article 6.03, weeds, stagnant water, and other unsanitary or unsightly matter of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Navasota, Texas regarding nuisances.
Mayor Council, just for a brief background, so current state law allows, actually, current state law and our city ordinance allows for nuisance abatement, unsightly matter, objectionable matter within city limits and within the ETJ, and that also includes tall weeds and grass. However, our current ordinance, it's not very clear, it says, if you, if you read chapter six, it says objectionable and unsightly matter within the city and the ETJ. However, on the tall grass portion, it only says in the city, even though state law does allow us to enforce tall grass cases within 5,000 feet, which is roughly the ETJ. It doesn't say it explicitly and not in a very clear and concise manner, so we work with Carrie on this to really get it cleaned up. We had, we had had a few instances where we have certain, you know, there's, I like to say where the, where the city meets the country, we had a lot of growth, obviously our city's growing, and so there's situations where you have, you know, neighborhoods that are accustomed to seeing manicured grass, and maybe it's near something that's not, not as manicured, so I think in these cases, we're definitely going to take more of a, if, if there's a complaint, we'll investigate and address those concerns, but our main focus is still going to be inside city limits, you know, there's no shortage of those, with all the recent rains we had, talk to Eric every day, and it's, it's whack 'em all out there, you mow one and there's another one already double in size, so, again, this is not to say we're going to focus all our efforts in the ETJ, but it's really just a way to clean up the language to be more clear in accordance with state law.
And you really weren't able to enforce it, because it wasn't spelled out.
Yeah, there, there's some gray in there, you know, Carrie probably said we could, but...
Sure, yeah, you know, this, this really doesn't enforce it, we'll treat it that way.
Makes it more concrete.
It, it does, I mean, the state law allows you to regulate this within 5,000 feet, the ordinance at ETJ, they are different in terms of distances, and so there's some cleanup that needed to be, that needed to happen, and the language that Lupe mentioned too, objectionable and that sort of thing, so it's, it's a, it's a tighter, it's a tighter ordinance with these changes.
I made the motion, second by Mr. Gessner, any further discussion?
I'm, I'm sorry, I do, I do, is it 48 inches or 12 inches? And section five, I'm sorry, section five says 48, and the other one says 12, section two, does it matter?
Yes, so if it's, if it's 12 inches, it's just a standard notice, you have a week to mow it, if it's 48 inches, it's considered a dangerous weed, and so we could actually hire a contractor, send you the bill and the notice that we mowed it, so, a little, little different.
Emergency, so to speak. You can immediately abate it.
Yeah, depending on how tall you are, you know, you could hide in the grass.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
I won't point out that Mac already left.
Item 10, consideration of possible action on resolution 802-25, designating authorized signatories for contractual documents pertaining to the Community Development Block Grant, MIT mod.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Helen Tenega, it's my instructor. This item is worth the consideration possible action for resolution number 802-25. The city received grant... The city received grant funding for a MIT mod for sewer and water improvements, and this resolution would be to execute any of the designating authorized signatories for contractual documents, so just allowing the mayor and our city manager to sign documents, and then Kristen and myself as well. Staff recommends approving this resolution.
This is making a general provision by title rather than by name.
Correct, yes sir. We brought a similar one for the Mini Street Grant a couple of months ago, this one is for the MIT mod, for the Foster Street.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve resolution eight oh two dash twenty-five.
Motion by Mr. Phillips, second by Mr. Gessner, to approve resolution eight oh two dash twenty-five, designating authorized signatories for contractual documents pertaining to the community development block grant MIT mod. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? See none, item carries.
Hello again, this item is to extend our contract...
On the eleventh, yes.
Sorry, yes sir.
You can read it real quick.
Oh, so sorry.
Consideration possible action on contract extension for depository services for the term August one twenty-five to July thirty-first, twenty-twenty-six, utilizing the one-year extension.
This is also for consideration possible action to extend the contract with Citizen State Bank, our depository bank, staff recommends approving this contract.
Why is it that you is, you is requesting to extend the one-year contract and not go out for bid?
I'll be honest with you, it kind of sprung up on me, with everything, the migrations and the audits, it just got past me. But next year, we do intend to go out for bid for a new bank.
It got past you, is it?
Yes, sir.
They actually reached out to us, this is one of those that just kind of fell off of our radar of, of seeing that it was coming up for the expiration of the term, and they, the bank reached out to us and said, hey, looks like it's coming to the end, do you want to do the one-year extension? And so, you know, we, we didn't, at that point, we didn't have time to do a full RFP process before the end of the, of the term, but I can assure you, it's already on our calendars, that we will be doing an RFP next year and, and going for, going through it. And the bank did also offer, just as a side note, interest rates have come up a little bit since this term, and so they've actually increased, increased our interest rate in the, in the depository account from point two percent to two point one five.
Wow. Yeah, I was going to question on that, we're going to go out for bid, and they increase, oh, we missed not on, on anything else.
Right, there, there is a potential that had we gone out for an RFP, we might have found a better offer from, from a competing bank, and again, it's just one of those that we missed, and we're going to make sure that we, that we catch it next year when it comes up. I will, what Heaven and I have also talked about, maybe not putting quite as many resources in this checking account that's receiving about, now it will be about two percent interest, and moving more of it to the investment pools that are getting about four percent, and so we're gonna, we're gonna be looking at that as well and balancing those, those needs out where we, where we know what our cash needs are and keep that in the checking account, but try to keep the reserve funds in our savings over in a, in the investment pools where we know we'll maximize the yield.
We've had a good service out of the bank, we've got no complaints.
I'm sorry, yes sir.
What was the question?
We've got no complaints, I mean, we had, had good service from the bank.
Oh, okay. And your answer was yes?
Yes, sir.
You know, the terms are the same, so there's no... Except that the interest is a little better, I guess.
Mr. Mayor, I move to authorize the one-year extension of the city's depository contract with Citizen State Bank through July thirty-first, twenty-twenty-six.
Second. Motion by Mr. Phillips, second by Mr. Gessner, to authorize the one-year extension to depository contract with Citizen State Bank through July thirty-first, twenty-twenty-six. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? See none, item carries.
Thank you.
Item twelve, consideration of possible action and approval of the annual financial report for fiscal year ending September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four for the City of Navasota.
Hey, Mayor and Council, I, I've discussed with a couple of you, but just kind of for the public's knowledge and for all of you, we do not have our, our annual audit yet for the fiscal year that ended September thirtieth of twenty-twenty-four. That's pretty disappointing, as most of you that have talked to me about it know, it's due March thirty-first, due six months after the close of the fiscal year. I have been in close contact over the last several weeks with our auditor, on the phone and in emails, and they have assured me that it, it was just a unfortunate circumstance with regard to, it was their first year being our auditor, we had a complete changeover in the leadership team and the finance office, and so it's our finance director's first time to go through the process, it's their first time to go through the process for Navasota, and, and so it's just taken them some time. They did send today at about two-thirty this afternoon, they sent a preliminary draft that they, in very big letters, said has not been reviewed by their, their reviewers yet, but they wanted us to at least see something, I didn't feel comfortable, I hadn't even spent the time, it's obviously came so late today looking at it, but I wasn't going to share that, not knowing what their reviewers are going to find, but we are staying on top of them, and even with it being their first year, I've not seen an audit this far behind before, it's pretty disappointing, and we have put them on notice that we will be doing an RFP for a different auditor for next year. We, we can't afford that, we have been in close contact with our bond rating agency, they don't at this point have an obligation to keep our bond rating, because we haven't turned in a completed audit, they've been open with, they've, they've been understanding thus far, and Heaven has been communicating with them and has told them where we are, and we've shared with them what we've gotten from the auditors, and as far as email exchanges, and they have accepted that thus far and said they would reach back out in August and, and try to get it from us, but at some point, their understanding is going to end, and so it's, I, I hope it goes without saying, that it's frustrating and we're going to stay on top of them, we're going to get this thing finished, and, and we're going to find someone who will commit to, to getting in within the statutory timeline.
Did they know this was going to be on our agenda tonight?
Uh, yes, we, we, well, we told them that we wanted it on the agenda, but they didn't know that when they didn't provide the agenda, the, the item, that I was going to leave it on there, but I spoke with the City Secretary and with Heaven and said, I want to leave it on there so that I can make a public comment, because I wanted not only you all, but the public to know that this is important to us and we are going to stay on top of it and get it fixed, get it, get it finished.
Have we paid them any money yet?
Sorry, yes, we have, for the first phase of the audit.
And how much was that?
I'll have to double-check for you, I don't want to give you the wrong number, but I will have that to you, or else it's Robert tomorrow.
This is something serious, because of the prior administration that we was going through, the baggage that he had was the bond rating, and we need to get on top of this and get on it fast, because we just got positive results this past year on our bond rating, and without us having an audit, we could lose our bond rating. This is something that we should have been on top of from day one.
Yes, sir, most certainly.
I, I feel like that if we hadn't paid them any money, or if we hadn't paid them too much money, we need to fire them and move on.
Most certainly.
I mean, I would like for it to be put back on the agenda for the next meeting.
It will be on the next agenda, my hope is that we will have you in the audit, and, and I will ask them to come to present it to you all, so you all can ask them these same questions, and, and hopefully get satisfactory answer, I don't know that anything will satisfy us, because we're all frustrated, but, but with regard to the termination and starting over, the, the problem with that is no other audit firm is going to take their work and accept it, and so, quite literally, we all, we, we would have to start over, and it would put us even further behind, and I just don't want to take that risk with our bond rating. I, I, I would, I would prefer, if we can get it from them in the next couple of weeks, I would prefer to get that, get it approved and done, and then move on to someone else for the next year.
Because it's not that they didn't get any clean that they asked for from the city.
That's correct, and, and I, and I was, I asked about that, because I wanted to make sure that the staff did what they're supposed to, and they, they, they said it was just a matter of, you know, the changeover, that there were some things in the system from the prior staff members within the finance department that, that they weren't able to find documentation in the system, journal entries where there was not substantiating documentation, and, and just, you know, they, they had to work through the process to find, okay, what was the methodology, where did this come from, why is it there? And, and so Heaven and her team have been trying to, to fill in those gaps, I, I think, my speculation is it was just a, you know, maybe not the most advanced or, or most experienced audit firm that, that got this job and just wasn't quite ready for the task.
I did, and when you said audit firm, I don't remember the council approving a contract, so did we.
I would assume they did, I was, it would have been before I was here, I would assume it came to you all.
Of a new company?
Were they a merger with the previous auditor?
No, no, sir. No, it was a, it was a different company that...
Was it completely different?
Yes, sir. That's my understanding, there, there was dissatisfaction with the prior firm, is my recall, so, because of some sex and balances maybe that were being overlooked, and so this is a completely new firm. Such a red question, was there, was there a merger, was it?
I think we changed, we had a different auditor a couple years and then this one, and I can look that information up in the minutes, but it was the contract approved for these people.
We can double-check on the merger question, that's my recollection, it's a different firm.
It's a different firm.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Seeing no further, items on the agenda, we're adjourned.